Good evening, everyone. I'm Rob Hanford. I'm the Communications Officer for the Town of Grand Falls Windsor. Sorry for being delayed for a couple of minutes. Just so the public knows, we have all of our councillors logged on except currently councillor Feener. He's experiencing some technical issues, so we have staff working with him behind the scenes and we hope to have him logged on as quickly as possible. And another thing I'll say is, because I'm superstitious if I don't say this, we're new at doing this, so we may have technical difficulties. If something happens, we're going to shut her down and we'll post on our social media that we'll regroup and we'll try to be back up within 15 minutes. So if something does happen, just bear with us and keep an eye on our social media page and our website. And with that, I think we can start the meeting. I'm good if everybody else is good. And councillors, remember to mute your mics if you are not speaking. With that said, I will throw it to Mayor Manuel to start the meeting.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Welcome to meeting number 548, the Town of Grand Falls Windsor Council. We do have a proclamation to deal with tonight that I'll read into the record before officially starting the meeting. I am going to turn off my video temporarily because the proclamation is on my iPad and my eyes are not that good. Okay, sorry about that. The proclamation is for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September 2021, in the Town of Grand Falls Windsor. Whereas there are about 10,000 children living with cancer in Canada today, and whereas each year about 1,600 cases are diagnosed, over 25 of which are children in Newfoundland and Labrador. Whereas in Canada, childhood cancer remains responsible for more deaths from one year through adolescence than any other disease. And whereas about one in four children who are diagnosed with cancer will die of the disease. Whereas because of significant advances in therapy, 78% of children diagnosed with cancer will survive five years or more, an increase of almost 46% since the early 1960s. Whereas childhood cancers have close to a 75% cure rate, with leukemia leading the success charge with close to 90% overall cure rate. Now, therefore, I, Barry Manuel, on behalf of the Town of Grand Falls Windsor, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the Town of Grand Falls Windsor. Okay, with that, I will call the meeting to order. The first order of business is the adoption of minutes, and we actually had two meetings, a short one to adopt a resolution that was timely and a another meeting before. So we have 546 and 547. Any errors or omissions?
Councillor Dwyer.
Councillor Dwyer, go ahead.
Meeting number 546, with respect to Public Works and Development. We referenced 260 Grand Falls Heights when it should have been correctly 262 Grand Falls Heights, where the committee discussed a request from a resident for cleaning up some town property. It's corrected in the current minutes, so.
Okay, thanks for pointing that out, and I'm sure the correction will be sure to be made. Any other errors or omissions from anyone? Okay, we need a mover and a seconder.
Still moved, councillor.
Councillor Cody Davis.
Moved by councillor Whiffon, seconded by councillor Cody Davis. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, is there any business arising out of those previous meetings? No business arising. We'll move on to the dispersment report. Councillor Whiffon, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the dispersment report in the amount of $498,279.22.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Whiffon. Looking for a seconder?
Councillor Cody Davis.
Seconded by councillor Cody Davis. Any discussion on the dispersment report? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, we move into committee reports. First up is Community Services. Councillor Cody Davis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Services Committee met on Tuesday, August 17th at 5:00 PM. In attendance, myself as the chairperson, councillor Mark Whiffon, Mayor Barry Manuel, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown and councillor Holly Dwyer. Staff included Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Rob Haniford, Communications Officer, and Keith Antle, the Director of Community Services. Gymnastics correspondence. The committee discussed correspondence from a gymnastics program parent looking for an answer to a permanent location for the gymnastics program. The committee recommends responding to the parent, highlighting the measures being taken to remedy this situation. The committee also recommends staff continue to work on the plan to rent a building within the next couple of months. Participation Community Better Challenge. The committee discussed correspondence from their provincial government, congratulating the Town of Grand Falls Windsor on being awarded this year's most active community in Newfoundland and Labrador in the 2021 Participation Community Better Challenge. The committee recommends using the $15,000 prize of prize money to go towards the purchase of recreational facility equipment, including a piece of sensory equipment. Disc golf correspondence. The committee discussed correspondence from Disc Golf NL, inquiring if the town are interested in building a new disc golf course in Grand Falls Windsor. Recently, courses were built in Stephenville and St. John's. Disc golf is one of the fastest-growing sports in Canada. The committee recommends that the director gather more information and report back to the committee at a future meeting. Windsor Stadium Correspondence. The committee discussed correspondence from the Central Impact AAA Midget Hockey Team, requesting their schedule of games be approved to start on October 1st. The committee recommends staff prepare the Windsor Stadium for opening on October 27th or sooner if possible. Upcoming tournament issues. The director updated the committee on several upcoming provincial and Atlantic baseball and softball tournaments happening in Grand Falls Windsor over the next few weeks. The committee recommends staff ensure all facilities are well-prepared for these events. A COA Correspondence. The director presented the committee with a COA's approval for a sliding hill under the Canada Community Revitalization Fund. The committee recommends staff make all the necessary arrangements for this work to be completed for the winter season. Our meeting adjourned at 6:35 PM, and I move the recommendations and the report of the committee.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Cody Davis.
Councillor Holly Dwyer.
Seconded by councillor Dwyer. Any discussion on the Community Services Minutes?
I just have one point, Mayor, on the Windsor Stadium.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep, the Windsor Stadium correspondence. In the minutes, it stated that we are looking at opening on October 27th. I just wanted to let the user groups know. We've met with monor hockey and with figure skating. Our aim is for September the 28th. I know that the Director of Community Services, Keith Antle, has been working with the groups and corresponding with them. I'm wondering if, if the director could give us an update on where we are. I know there were some items that had to be taken care of first. I just want to make sure we're still on track for September the 27th or 28th, I think it was.
Yep, everything is still going forward. We've contacted all the groups and tomorrow is the deadline for everybody to get their submissions for each time back, so we will review that. And next week, we will carry on pushing forward to, to get the arena open as quick as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that, Keith. And councillor Cody Davis, are you done?
Yes, that's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion or comment on the Community Services Minutes? Hearing none. Just a couple of quick comments. One, obviously, I think everybody is pleased to see the sliding hill moving forward. I know council has been excited about that project, as has the community, for some while. So we look forward to having a sliding hill sometime in the near future where residents can enjoy more sliding than just Churchill Park and all the places around, I guess, that we were sliding on as kids, and some don't exist anymore. So it's a good project and look forward to going ahead. And of course Rotary are looking to support that project as well, so I should give them a shout-out. The gymnastics program, I was mentioning about correspondence. I just wanted to ask the director, because I know a letter was drafted to the gymnastics group parents and wondered if that has gone out yet. Mr. Antle?
Yes, the letter has been put together and after this meeting tonight, when this all passes, that meeting or that letter will be sent to, to the parent that sent in that request tomorrow.
Okay, well, I just would hope that that correspondence is going to be widely spread, I guess, because as you know, that's kind of an answer that's on a lot of people's minds. I know gymnastics is our program and doesn't necessarily have an organized group, but there are coaches and that have connections. So just want to make sure that the gymnastics parents in town who are concerned about this issue are going to be able to see the content of that letter, because I do know it outlines mainly a lot of the challenges that this council has experienced in trying to find a full-time home for gymnastics since they left Bailey Street, probably two and a half, three years ago now. And we have been hitting a lot of roadblocks. We looked at just about every building in town. I think every one that could possibly host gymnastics. We, we approached contractors to see if they would put up facilities and maybe we could lease to own or rent, and that didn't come to fruition. We looked at the cost of new facilities, and we also had a person in town who has a commercial building that was vacant that we were ready to sign a lease with in October, or sorry, in August. And unfortunately, at the last minute, that was taken away from us when a retail client had reached out to them with a 10-year lease offer. So unfortunately, we still haven't got that full-time home. But I know I speak for everyone here that gymnastics is such an important program. We recognize the, obviously, the health for the kids, but also that there are over 300 kids in that program now. It is a growing program. We have also been discussing and have a report done on a multi-recreation purpose facility, and there are a lot of considerations around that, certainly something we will be discussing with the public. But ideally, we would like to see a new facility that would include gymnastics and, you know, likely some of the other facilities that are older and maybe giving us some trouble maintenance-wise included in that facility as well. Another thing to mention would be the indoor walking track for seniors that we all know. Seniors have been crying out for, and we've tried to look at other facilities to add on, and the engineering just didn't allow it. So that'll be something I'm sure that'll come up for more discussion in the future, and just wanted to give that update on gymnastics, because everyone here knows that that's been a frustrating thing for council and I'm sure for the gymnastics parents and kids as well. Okay, any other comments on the Community Services Minutes? Hearing none. We got a mover and a seconder? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Country-minded? Carried. Okay, next up is Public Works and Development. Councillor Dwyer, please.
Sorry, Mayor, this is Rob, and I just want to cut in just for the public's knowledge and for the sake of the minutes. I just wanted to note that councillor Feener was able to log on at the beginning of councillor Cody Davis reading the Community Services Minutes. So he's been on for about 10 minutes now.
Okay, thanks for that, Rob. And welcome councillor Feener. Okay, well, Public Works and Development Minutes, you can go ahead councillor Dwyer, please.
Thanks, Mayor. The following are the minutes for Public Works and Development, which was held 5:00 PM Wednesday, August 18th, 2021. Present were myself as chairperson, members Mayor Barry Manuel, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, councillor Mark Whiffon, councillor Amy Cody Davis. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development. 262 Grand Falls Heights. The committee would like to make a correction to the previous meeting minutes that the discussion was surrounding 262 Grand Falls Heights and not 260 Grand Falls Heights. The committee further discussed the request from the resident at 262 Grand Falls Heights to continue cleaning up some of the town-owned land adjacent to their property and complete some landscaping. Councillor Dwyer and the Director of Public Works and Development visited the site and updated the rest of the committee on the proposed work that was requested. The committee recommends this request again be denied and to inform the resident, as well as the property owner at 260 Grand Falls Heights, that no further work is to take place on town property. The property is a road reservation, and future development may interfere or destroy any unauthorized landscaping in use that currently exists. Any work already completed is at the risk of the homeowners, and the town will not be providing any compensation for unauthorized development of the property. Cleanup Order 12 Union Street. The committee reviewed recent inspections of the property at 12 Union Street. There are concerns with the large excavation left from the demolition of the old dwelling, garbage debris on the property, placement of an old shed without a permit that doesn't meet regulations, and some overall low maintenance, lot maintenance. The neighborhood is negatively affected by the condition of the property. Several attempts were made to have the property owner correct the issues, but were unsuccessful. The committee recommends staff prepare a property status report for the CAO and a clean-up order be issued. Street Name Request Powell. The committee reviewed a request for a street to be named Powell in honor of Mr. Harry Powell, who was a World War II Navy veteran and an active member in the local Royal Canadian Legion and NIL club. The committee acknowledges that Mr. Powell was an active member of the community, but recommends staff contact the person who submitted the street name request to provide additional information for council's consideration. Once received, the committee recommends bringing the information to a future meeting for further discussion. Variance Request 34 Ivanies Road. The committee discussed a request from the property owner of 34 Ivanies Road for a variance of 10% in the building height of an accessory building to accommodate the construction. The adjacent homeowners to the property were contacted for input or representation, along with notification to the public, and there were no objections or concerns received. The committee recommends the request variance be approved. 2021 Paving Tender. The committee reviewed a request from the Director of Public Works and Development to reallocate a portion of the funding allocated to Finn Avenue in the current project to the section of Pondview Drive that was previously identified by council to be completed in a future tender. The construction on Finn Avenue was changed due to site conditions, and some work was not required, which resulted in savings. The portion of work is under the gas tax funding agreement, and the gas tax secretariat supports the reallocation. The committee recommends that the funding be reallocated and that the section of Pondview be completed under the current paving tender in 2021. 216A Grand Falls Heights. The committee reviewed a request for the town to purchase the property at 216A Grand Falls Heights, which is 1.72 hectares. The land is adjacent to a road reservation at 224 Grand Falls Heights and has the potential for future residential development. The section could possibly be part of the overall development plan from Lloyd Street. The committee agrees that if the land can be obtained for a fair price, the long-term investment would benefit the town. The committee recommends staff discuss the purchase price with the owner and bring back to a future committee for consideration. Traffic Concerns Brown Avenue. The committee discussed a traffic concern brought forward by the resident of 21 Brown Avenue. The resident is located around a turn heading downhill, and it's difficult to see oncoming vehicles as they exit their driveway when traffic approaches the traffic lanes from Brown Avenue. Also motorists approaching would have a similar difficulty as they make the turn. The Chief Municipal Enforcement Officer has recommended that additional signage may help alert drivers of the hidden driveway. The committee recommends that additional signage be installed to alert motorists of the hidden driveways. The meeting adjourned at 6:00 PM, and I move the recommendations of this report.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Dwyer. For a seconder?
Councillor Cody Davis.
Seconded by councillor Cody Davis. Any discussion on the Public Works and Development Minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, we do have some resolutions to deal with, and I'll call on councillor Dwyer again to go through those three resolutions, one at a time, and we'll pass them accordingly.
Thank you, Mayor. If I'm having some difficulty, it's because I'm sitting here with my phone at about .2 font and a magnifying glass. So, so much for technology. This is Resolution GFW 2021-328, Integrated Community Sustainability Municipal Plan 2020 to 2030 and Development Regulations 2020 to 2030. Under the authority, Section 23 of the Urban and Rural Planning Act 2000, the Town, the Town Council of Grand Falls Windsor accepts the Commissioner's report and recommendations regarding the Integrated Community Sustainability Municipal Plan 2020-2030 and the Development Regulations 2020-2030 dated August 29th, 2021, and approves the Integrated Community Sustainability Municipal Plan 2020-2030 as adopted and the Development Regulations 2020 to 2030 as amended and all associated MEPS as submitted.
Well, Mayor, here I am, you.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Dwyer. Looking for a seconder on every resolution?
Still moved. Councillor Whiffon?
Mayor. Councillor Whiffon. Any discussion on the first resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, councillor Dwyer, if you could go ahead with resolution number two, please.
Sure. This is Resolution GFW 2021-328. It's the Integrated Community Sustainability Municipal Plan. No, it isn't. Sorry. This is GFW 2021, Resolution 329, Circular Road Area Water, Storm and Sanitary Sewer Upgrades Project Funding. Whereas the Minister and the council have agreed to enter into municipal infrastructure funding agreement for the financing of circular road, area water, storm and sanitary sewer upgrades, project number 17GI-22-00034, under the Green Infrastructure of the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, and have agreed to total project costs not in excess of $3,489,067, which amounts to $3,164,007 after the GST-HST rebate calculation. Whereas the cost-shared funding for this agreement is as follows. Provincial: $949,202. Federal: $1,265,603. And municipal: $949,202. And whereas the Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure has been authorized to negotiate an agreement on behalf of the province of Newfoundland and Labrador, therefore, be it resolved, the council accepts the cost-shared funding as outlined above and authorize the mayor and town clerk to enter into an agreement on behalf of the council.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Dwyer.
Councillor Cody Davis, second.
Seconded by councillor Cody Davis. Any discussion on the second resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, councillor Dwyer, you're up again. Resolution number three, please.
So this is Resolution GFW 2021-330. Whereas the town revised capital investment plan. Whereas the Town of Grand Falls Windsor qualifies for funding under the provincial gas tax agreement, whereas all spending under this agreement must be approved through submission of a gas tax capital investment plan. And whereas the Town of Grand Falls Windsor has a funding shortfall of $63,479 in project number 17-CCR-21-00010, which is an ICIP-funded project, supporting documents attached for the Goodyear Avenue parking lot and recreational upgrades. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Grand Falls Windsor approves the allocation of funding under the gas tax agreement for Goodyear Avenue Parking Lot and Recreational Upgrades, project number 17-CCR-21-00010, in the amount of $63,479.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Dwyer. Looking for a seconder?
Councillor Cody Davis.
Councillor Cody Davis, second. Any discussion on the third resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on now to Corporate Services. There are two sets of minutes for Corporate Services, so councillor Whiffon, I'll ask you to go through the first set.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The Corporate Services Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. In attendance were Mayor Barry Manuel, councillor Holly Dwyer, myself, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, councillor Sean Feener, councillor Rod Bennett, councillor Amy Cody Davis. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Rob Haniford, Communications Officer, and Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services. Taxation Receivable Analysis Report. The committee reviewed the taxation analysis for July 2021. The report analyzes the receivables balance, along with the amounts collected during the month. The total taxation received as of that date was $5,025,948, which is a decrease of $1,293,250, or 20.47% from the previous year. So I mean, receivables are down, which means we're collecting more. Total amount of taxes collected in July 2021 was $451,832. The committee recommends the staff continue to work with residents and businesses to get all outstanding taxes paid as soon as possible. In addition, residents are reminded to contact the Corporate Services Department at 709-489-0402 to discuss payment options or to set up a payment plan. The dispersment report. The committee reviewed the dispersment report in the amount of $498,279.22 and recommends this be presented at the next council meeting. Labor Report. The committee reviewed the labor costs as of week 33. Total labor was $1,950,011. This was $509,939, or 20.7% under budget. The committee recommends that staff continue to monitor labor costs moving forward. Project Approval: Circular Road Upgrades. The committee reviewed approval for funding from the provincial government for project 17-GI-22-00034, circular road, area water, storm and sanitary sewer upgrades. The total project cost net of HST rebate is $3,164,007. Sorry, $3,164,007, and the town's portion of that is 30%, or $949,202. The committee recommends accepting the approval of this funding and a resolution be adopted at the next council meeting. Funding Request. The committee reviewed a request from the College of the North Atlantic to sponsor an orientation breakfast for students and staff. The committee recommends $500 be approved. The meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM, and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Whiffon. Looking for a seconder?
Councillor Cody Davis.
Deputy Mayor Brown.
I think if we had to wait 20 seconds, we still would have got two people. I think if we had to wait 20 seconds, we still would have got two people coming at the same time. I think councillor Cody Davis beat you to it again, Deputy Mayor. So we do have a mover and a second or, and any discussion on the first set of corporate services minutes? Okay, hearing none. I just wanted to comment on one very exciting piece of news for all of us and a lot of other residents in town, particularly in the Circular Road area. We had, as a council for the last three years, maybe even four, but three for sure, had put on our priority list to government the Circular Road Upgrades, the Water, Storm and Sewer as our number one priority. Unfortunately, in that world, we did not get to decide which projects will go ahead regardless of priority, and we did not get the funding. So this year, we applied for only one project, which was Circular Road, and thankfully, we have approval. And I know all of us have been talking to a lot of residents in that area, you know, in the last number of years who've experienced issues with some of those different infrastructure worries and problems. Obviously, the infrastructure in that area is probably, I don't know, I'd say 80 years old is a rough guess, and is dug rather shallow, you know, so it's good to get all that in place in Circular Road and all the streets within. We'll see a good improvement, I'm sure, and, you know, we're always looking to improve the infrastructure around town. The problem always becomes that we just don't have access to the kinds of funds that it would require to do it all at one time. And this is where the asset management plan has been coming into place, using computer data to be able to track the infrastructure underground, to be able to assess the condition, and to be able to have computer-generated recommendations which infrastructure in town should be looked at next. And there's a number of different variables and factors in that. But I thought that was worth a second mention. Everybody is pleased, and I'm sure Circular Road residents will be pleased to hear. Any other discussion or comment on the first set of corporate services minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Country-minded?
Well, one second, Mayor. I'm just recognizing something now. The second minute is regarding the College of the North Atlantic breakfast funding, or for the orientation sponsorship, which was also in the previous minute. So I think in the previous minute, that was a mistake. And I believe councillor Dewar used herself from that discussion.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, that would be correct. So what I'd like to do is to go back and exclude that minute that was rightly to be in the second set of minutes, as councillor Whitten had indicated. And because councillor Dewar did remove herself from that discussion as an employee at the college, she did not participate and should not be reflected in the voting. So I'd like to strike the college breakfast donation from those minutes, and I'll ask for a mover and a second or to do that.
All moved.
Mayor Manuel.
Yes, councillor Cody Davis.
Sorry. Should we make the motion to remove that from the minutes first and then vote on those minutes with that removed?
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion to remove that minute from the first set of community services, corporate services minutes.
Okay, and you likely missed it based on your comments, but that was what I was doing, trying to get a motion to remove.
Sorry.
So.
I was just striking it from.
No, no problem. So councillor Cody Davis has moved that minute be removed from the first set of corporate services minutes, and seconded by councillor Whitten. So any discussion on that motion to remove that minute? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, we have already had discussion, of course, on those minutes, so I'll go right ahead now and ask for a second or to councillor Whitten's motion to accept those first minutes.
Councillor Cody Davis.
Councillor Cody Davis, quick off the draw tonight. We have councillor Whitten moving and councillor Cody Davis seconding. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, now we've got that cleared up, councillor Whitten, I'll ask you to move into that second set of minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Corporate Services Committee met at 6:45 PM on Tuesday, August 24, 2021. At present was Mayor Barry Manuel as acting chair, myself, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, councillor Sean Feener, councillor Rod Bennett, councillor Amy Cody-Davis, staff in attendance were Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Robin Hanaford, Communications Officer, and Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services. Funding requests. The committee reviewed a request from the College of the North Atlantic to sponsor an orientation breakfast for the students and staff. The committee recommends $500 be approved. The meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM, and I move the recommendation and report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Whitten. I'll look for a second or, and obviously, just to let folks know, based on the previous discussion, councillor Dewar is excluded from this minute and will not be voting. So I will look for a second or on councillor Whitten's motion to accept the minute.
Councillor Bennett.
Councillor Bennett, any discussion on the second set of corporate services minutes?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a quick comment.
Yep, go ahead, councillor Whitten.
Okay. No, I'd just like to point out that sponsoring the orientation breakfast is something the town does every year, and that even though councillor Dewar, as a member of council, that would really not have any impact on the decision to sponsor the breakfast, because it's something that we've been doing, I think even since I did my year at the college as well, my transfer here. So it's just something that we regularly sponsor.
Yep, thanks for that. We've been doing it since I've been on council as well, and I remember before councillor Dewar's term, we had councillor Pinson, who was an employee, and also we had the same situation when this donation would come out. So thanks for that clarification. Okay, we have a mover and a second or. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded? Motion carried. Okay, next up is notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion? No notice of motion. We'll move into other business, and I think I did this last time, but I'm going to go across my screen as they appear and ask people for their other business, and that starts with councillor Feener.
Oh, councillor Feener, you're on mute, sorry.
Sorry about this, guys. Technology is against me this evening. Now, I just have a couple of things. Mr. Mayor, I just want to wish my mother Hazel a happy 82nd birthday this evening. I just rushed from the barbecue we had just to get on council, so I want to take a minute to wish her a happy birthday. And I also like to thank, you know, the public for all the support they've given me over the last four years on council. I know it's been quite a uphill battle, and I just want to thank everybody and hope everything turns out good on September 29th. Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. Next up is councillor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things here. I would like to send in my sincere condolences to the family of the young man who had passed away this morning on the TCH in Grand Falls Windsor. Such a tragedy. Again, Grand Falls Windsor, we see there's just way too much. Thinking about our volunteer firefighters, our staff. There's help out there. If anybody needs it, please avail them the help that you, if you need help. It's tough for everybody. So, you know, if you find that you need a little help, help us out there. You know, contact the fire department and get some help. Second thing, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank each one of my fellow councillors over the past four years. We've had our ups and downs, but I wish each and every one of you all the best in the future. And that's it from me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bennett. Yes, certainly, I would add my condolences as well on that terrible accident this morning. And I know that in this case, it was a fairly well-known young man, and it's never easy. And as councillor Bennett had pointed out, anybody involved in that in any way certainly should make sure that everything is okay, that you do have help out there, and to go seek it out and make sure that you look out for your mental health when it comes to those terrible incidents. So thanks for that. Next up, we got councillor Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let council know, and anyone who's listening, that in August, I nominated a senior from our community for the province's Senior of Distinction Award. And that was Mr. Tom Granter. He passed away in June of this year, and you talked about somebody who gave tirelessly and selflessly. He was certainly a great asset to our community, and he was somebody who, he was one of the founding members of the Kinsman Club. He volunteered with that club for over 60 years. And, you know, that's quite an accomplishment in itself. But he was probably more well-known as the real Santa in Grand Falls Windsor, and he took on that role for over 30 years. And I went over and spoke to Mrs. Granter, who I probably haven't had a conversation with since I stood up in the lineup at the cafeteria at GFA Elementary and looked forward to a plate of fries and gravy and wieners. And we reminisced about, you know, some of his accomplishments. He served as director and president of the Kinsman Club. And it was actually the Lions Club that organized the Santa Claus parade, but he would always volunteer because people knew him as the real Santa. And she told me that he was in such high demand as the real Santa that he would actually schedule his holidays at the mill to be able to attend all of the functions that he had to for the real Santa. And when somebody would give him a donation or something, a present, he would always find somebody to give that to, somebody more needy. So quite a man, and I don't know where it's going to go, but I received a letter of recommendation from both the mayor and from Mr. Harold Butt, who was also involved in the Kinsman Club for a number of years. So that was great, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dewar. Yeah, just quickly to add on to that, because not only is the mayor, did I know Mr. Granter, and I'm sure most people here are probably the same, because his son Mark, his youngest son in the family, went to school with councillor Dewar, and I know I played a lot of sports with Mark, and Mr. Granter was always involved from an organization standpoint, and just a very stand-up, well-respected man, and sad to see his passing earlier this summer. And as councillor Dewar stated, he was great for the community, and hopefully, we hear some good news in the future that Mr. Granter may very well win that award posthumously because of that nomination. So thank you. Next up is Deputy Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate the Community Garden, and what I understand has been a very successful season, if that way. Had a chance to talk to Wayne Thomas last week. He's been a part of that organization since its beginning, and it was a banner year and a banner crop for the Community Garden. This year saw the inclusion of Tuxby Better Farm and the Y2C being a big part of the Community Garden. So congratulations and thanks to all involved. Community Garden is a big part of our community, and I know we expanded this year and look to expand again next year. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate one of our own, Keith Antle, who won the men's club championship this past weekend at our golf course in Grand Falls Windsor. It was the fourth time Mr. Antle won the championship and managed to shoot 69 on the last day of the tournament, something most of us around the chambers can only dream of. So congratulations, Keith. Great job, and I'm sure you're quite proud of your accomplishment, and so you should be. And finally, I'd like to thank the CAO and the directors and all our employees over the last four years. This is our, this will be the last council meeting of this particular council. And last but not least, my, Mr. Mayor yourself and my fellow councillors for your cooperation, and you know, we had a lot accomplished in the last four years despite our current situation, and lots that we can be proud of. And I'll just wrap up by saying that, you know, I sincerely wish that we can come to a settlement with our utilized workforce sooner or later, and I know everybody in Grand Falls Windsor wants this over with, and we can get things back to normal. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brown. Next up is councillor Whitten.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of things. First, just like to remind everybody that it's, you know, back to school season. So there's going to be a lot more traffic on the road, a lot more kids on the road, walking to and from school. So just to remind drivers to be cognizant and pay attention, pay attention to the road. Traffic gets heavier in certain areas, so drive safe and pay attention to your surroundings. And as this is our last council meeting before the next municipal election, I'd just like to thank the residents of Grand Falls Windsor for giving me the opportunity to serve on council. It was a very enjoyable experience. I'd like to thank the fellow councillors as well, as well as all the staff for a great term, and I congratulate everybody, all the candidates that have put their name forward for this election. That's a big undertaking. You know, it's very courageous to put your name forward in this type of, for public office. So I congratulate everyone and wish everyone the best of luck in the upcoming municipal election. And yeah, we'll hope for, you know, hopefully we'll see what the residents will trust a second term in me, as you know, seeking reelection, and hopefully they trust a second term on September 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whitten. Councillor Cody Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch on the back to school. I know right now all the schools are back in session, and, you know, the mask restrictions have been lessened. They're still, you know, advising that if you want to wear a mask, to wear your mask, if you can't maintain your social distancing. But they're doing their best at every grade level to get back to some type of normalcy. So, you know, I would encourage everybody to stay safe, follow the rules. The kids, you know, 12 and under still are unable to get vaccinated, so, you know, it's important that we do our best to protect them as well. There's been several outbreaks around the province right now, so we know that, you know, living with COVID is going to be a thing for us. So I would encourage people, if you have not been vaccinated, to get vaccinated. Vaccine clinics are still happening. There's pop-up clinics happening all over the province. I think Dominion had one there just the other day. Several pharmacies are administering the vaccine, as well as the regular central health clinics are still happening. So I just encourage everyone, please, you know, get your vaccine if you can, and again, just encourage people, if you want to wear your masks, still continue to wear them. Please be kind to everybody. Everybody has different reasons why they are wearing or not wearing their masks. So again, just be kind. Also, congratulations to all of the teachers and students for making the first day back to school. Seemed like it went pretty swimmingly, actually. There didn't seem to be any issues. I know it was a big adjustment. Everybody's happy to be back. I have to say, I've never seen kids so excited to go back to school in September. I have to say, I've never seen kids so excited to go back to school in September. I know, you know, always there is some excitement, but this September, after the year and a half that they punched, you know, just recently with the online learning and being at home and being away from their friends, there was an extra bit of excitement and a little bit of more pep in the step as the kids were heading off to the bus and heading into school. So, just continue to be safe, enjoy every single day, and hopefully we'll be able to be in class for the full year. And for all students who have gone off to university, I know, you know, if you're a Facebook fan, you've been inundated with pictures of kids leaving to go to university and kids leaving to go back to school and enter into new grades or enter school for the first time. So, Facebook is a bit of an emotional roller coaster for a lot of people these days, but it's certainly been a lot of fun and such a pleasure to be able to see everybody's pictures. And the last item for me tonight, I just want to touch on the election. I'm going to put my municipality's Newfoundland Labrador hat on as president. I just wanted to say that, you know, M and L, along with the Department of Municipal and Provincial Affairs, have been running the Make Your Mark campaign. And what we've been doing is encouraging people to put their names on the ballots for municipal election. And throughout the province, you know, municipal elections, some are very healthy, some don't even have enough to fill a ballot. A lot of the councillors are acclaimed, mayors are acclaimed. And then by-elections will be following shortly thereafter to try to fill the remaining seats that weren't filled, you know, on September the 28th and through nominations. So, it really hasn't changed this year. You know, there are some communities and communities close to us who don't have enough people nominated to form a council. So, by-elections will have to be held. We've had mayors in this region who have been acclaimed and all over the province as well. Even in the city of St. John's, the mayor and deputy mayor were both acclaimed. The city of Paradise had mayor acclaimed. So, you know, it's different times. We're very fortunate in Grand Falls Windsor to have such a huge slate of candidates. And, you know, I wish them all the best. It's very healthy. It's healthy for democracy. And I hope we all have an opportunity, you know, to kind of get together and have a forum. I know the community is asking for a forum. I know it's going to be very difficult to coordinate and moderate a forum with 19 council candidates and three mayoral candidates. But we hope that one of the organizations or several of the organizations here in Grand Falls Windsor, who normally do do those forums, can certainly pull something together. Because I think it's important that the community gets to hear personally from each of the candidates, you know, and to see them in a public forum and be able to see them respond to questions rather than just relying on their brochures or quick chats at the doors, you know, at the doorsteps and whatnot, or out in the community. So, hopefully, we can pull that together. It's been a pleasure. This, you know, is three terms for me, and I hope to keep going. It's certainly a passion of mine. I love it. And I love working with all of the individual councillors and working with the residents in the communities. I would encourage our residents to, you know, Make Your Mark was not just to encourage people to run for municipal politics, but it's also encouraging people to make your mark on the ballot. So, I would encourage you to get out and cast your ballot. The advanced polls are on September the 18th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Election Day is on September the 28th. Polls are open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There's proxy voting is available. You can reach out. All of the information on advanced polls, Election Day, proxy voting is all available on the town Grand Falls Windsor Facebook page. So, if you have people who are unable to vote in the advanced poll or on Election Day, who would normally vote or who are looking to vote for the first time, maybe just turned 18 and are probably gone off to school, then they can fill out a proxy vote and send it to Kara Hutchinson at the town office. And she will check it over and see that it gets approved and get the information back to the individual so that they can have someone else cast their ballot for them. And that's very important. I know people don't like to miss the opportunity to vote. So, all that information is available. I would strongly encourage everybody to take advantage of every opportunity that they can to vote. And also, I had said it was the last thing, but the federal election. I mean, I've done tons of interviews lately, wondering, you know, that, talking to the media about how they were a little concerned that the municipal elections would be overshadowed by the federal. But I think the federal is kind of being overshadowed by the municipal elections, especially here in Grand Falls Windsor. So, I want to encourage everybody to vote in the federal election as well. We have two very strong candidates running here, you know, in our district. The election is on September the 20th. They do have a vote by mail option. I'm not sure what the deadline is to request a ballot and to have it returned. I would suggest if you are looking at that option, that you check into that right away. And you can get that at elections.ca, or you can call the local electoral office here in Grand Falls Windsor. There's several set up in the region to find out, you know, how you can get that mail-in ballot. And you can also vote in advanced polls as well. I think they're open for a week. I'm not sure of the dates. But again, just Google federal election in your district, and all that information will certainly be readily available. Or just contact one of the headquarters of one of the candidates, and you'll be able to get that information as well. But just again, please vote, exercise your right. It is your right to vote, and every vote counts. So, thank you, everybody. It's been a pleasure. And hopefully, we will be able to continue this good work that we've been doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Cody Davis. That leaves me. I do have a few things. I did have Keith Antle on my list to recognize as well as club champion once again. And the thing that deputy mayor Brown didn't mention that really was something I'm sure is unique, is that Keith's son, Michael, won the club championship last year. I'm correct in saying that, I hope. And Keith, deputy mayor?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Okay, so, well, nonetheless, to have a father and son both win the club championship in such a short period of time is definitely unique. So, congrats to Keith, and obviously, a good accomplishment for anybody who knows the golf course up there. I've come close to 69 a few times, but I only played half the course in order to get there. So, that means very vague golf. I also wanted to recognize Mr. Roy Green. Roy, as most people may know now, has moved on from his business at the Grand Falls Drug Store. Likely, I'm sure, undoubtedly, the oldest business in town, local business. And Roy did reach out to council and wrote a nice letter thanking us for our relationship over the years. And, you know, Roy has done some great things over there. He's put such a focus on local. He probably had one of the best commercials on the radio in a few years with a little jingle he had done about Grand Falls Drugs. And he, in talking to him, wanted to make sure that he kept that business local. There was interest, of course, in the bigger companies to come in and take over, and he decided to go against that. And he has a couple of young people who have purchased the pharmacy. And as of September the 1st, I understand Roy is no longer with them. So, all the best to Roy and Suzette and family in his retirement, and thank him for the great service that he brought to Grand Falls Windsor in his time at Grand Falls Drugs. Councillor Cody Davis mentioned back to school. I did want to mention, and this comes up on occasion every now and then, and I think, you know, to talk about speeding around town and distracted driving is put in that conversation automatically, I think, these days. And just to remind people to please be careful when you're behind the wheel. We have these evenings that are kind of twilight-y dark. People are walking a lot because the weather's still nice. They're difficult to see in many cases. We have crosswalks in many areas around town. Try to sign them as much as possible. But if someone is going fast and has their head in their cellphone, then obviously, there's nothing going to protect against that. You see it every day. I hear it every day from residents. And pretty much every street in town has speeding problems, with the exception of maybe a couple that it may be impossible to speed on because of the length. So, just ask people to think about what you're doing. Make sure that you're not using your cellphone and texting and emailing and that while you are driving. I'm sure it can wait till you get to your destination. It is a small town. And we see too many examples of accidents that have happened in other areas and even in our own community some years ago, when someone who's distracted may run into a pedestrian, and there could be a fatality, and then everybody's life around that situation changes in an instant and not for the good. So, don't think it can't happen to you. It could happen to anybody. And it's very important that we are conscious of that. I too want to thank the residents. Obviously, the election will be coming up soon. And I'm not sure who will be sitting in these seven seats after the election. But I'd like to thank all my fellow councillors and all the staff and residents. It's been an enjoyable time on council. I know all of us are seeking reelection. So, congrats to everybody and best of luck in your respective campaigns. And also, congratulations to all the candidates who came up with their name forward. It is not easy to put yourself out there. As councillor Cody Davis said, there's healthy interests in council in Grand Falls Windsor, which is great to see. And obviously, we want to encourage people to get out and exercise your right to vote. And we'll see where the chips fall and how the council looks in October. The last thing I wanted to touch on is directly related with the current labor dispute. And I know it's kind of like the elephant in the room a lot of times. But I do want to have a few words about it from my perspective. And this is the last opportunity, obviously, for me to do so in council. And I've been involved in this process since the beginning. And I certainly, like everybody, disappointed that this sad situation has arose, that we're in a very difficult situation. When people say that it's not good for anybody, it's not good for the community, I do agree 100%. I never thought we would get into this predicament that we're in. And really, we set out to try to look at the collective agreement and things that could be worked on with the union, cooperated to make things better for the town, to give us an ability to be more accountable for the residents, especially financially with some decisions and managerial decisions. And also, you know, to make sure that there was little impact on the employees. And there's been a lot of talk around, and we got a lot of comments all over social media and the community. And, you know, people are wondering where exactly to find out what reality is. And it's disappointing, of course, because I think that all the staff and all the management and non-union staff and the union and the council all want things to move forward. And we want things to be positive. And I think they have been positive for sure up to this particular point, but we will get through this too. You know, a couple of things I did want to mention specifically, because I am hearing it from people daily now who are asking me specific questions about this situation. And I hear people saying, you know, that the town is trying to tear up the contract and take away all the rights. They're trying to throw seniority out the door. They're trying to take away health insurance. They're trying to, what else? You know, there are other things too. But from my perspective, that is just not the case. And when you look at some of these things like seniority, for example, seniority in the contract is not going to change in terms of our last proposal to the union, which is what reality is at this point. So, seniority and job descriptions and promotions and that kind of stuff will be handled the same way it always was. When it comes to casual workers and seniority, there's been a lot of talk about the getting dinged, I guess, if you will, because you miss a call. We have about 20 casual employees. They work seasonally from May to, or April sometimes, I think, to October. Then they're laid off for the winter, and they go on a casual calling list, which is a part of their employment conditions at the beginning. So, a lot of talk's been that their casuals are not being treated fairly, and they could lose their seniority if they missed three calls in a row. And from my experience and from the information, the facts I know, is that, for one thing, in my time in eight years, I believe we only had one, two, or at maximum, three people who have ever lost their seniority. So, to suggest that that could happen in one day is just an extreme exaggeration. I've heard people say that, you know, if you don't call, if you don't pick up the phone, you're in the shower, two minutes later you call back, you get dinged. It's not the case. It does not happen. Our managers, our supervisors have been more than understanding, more than accommodating when employees talk to management, "Oh, I was in the shower," or "I'm on my way back to the cabin." And they have been cooperation from both sides. And to hear that, you know, managers or supervisors are looking to put these strikes on the record when this has not been the case in all my time is disappointing to hear. And, you know, the casual employees, if they miss three consecutive calls, yes, it's already in the contract that they would go to the bottom of the seniority list. But I'm being told by residents that they understand that they would be fired if that happened. And, you know, these are sorts of things that are getting out there. It is very disappointing. And obviously, it's not something that we want, but to address it, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more talk about it in the next few weeks. We have the contract negotiations now, which began in October. About 80% of the entire clauses negotiating has been done. You know, that took a long time. Obviously, there were a number of meetings between union and negotiating team for the town and for the union. And we are at a point now where we're just down to some nitty-gritty things. And they are including, of course, some things that have been highly talked about and some things that have been on the table from the town's perspective from the very beginning. So, you know, out of the 80% that had been dealt with, I would suggest that there's nothing there that has been changed that is, could be described as unfair or could be described as something that is going to have a major negative impact on any staff. So, you know, over half of the original proposals from the town, and this has been said, were language housekeeping things, things that we changed pronouns over half. But yet, I hear people say, particularly people close to the union executive, that all the things that were on the table are still being referred to as takes. And I just ask how you can consider a clause in the contract that is just updating the language pronouns to be considered a take when there's absolutely no impact on either side. But that's the way it continues to get presented. I also hear people saying that we're trying to tear away the health insurance and a lot of, I guess, confusion around our group insurance plan. And really, there's two things that some people get confused about. I guess, you've got the group insurance in the premiums that are paid for. And then you have the actual plan, which there's percentages that would be covered, dispensing fees, I think is normal for all health plans to be that way. But for the town, we went to the union at the beginning, and we all know now that the union has 100% premiums paid for by the town because they bargained it some 18 years ago. And that's been great. And it's great for them to be able to do it because it's not many, if any, these days that have that privilege. So, what we have offered, to clarify, what we have offered is that we would continue to pay 100% of the costs at the current rate. And if any increases occur in the future, then that would be the responsibility of the employees because the plan is just not sustainable in the long term. So, when we talk about employees, the unionized employees, non-union and management are all under the same plan. Every employee is under the same group insurance plan, which we pay roughly about $600 per month, per employee, for premiums. And that totals about $865,000 a year to the town's coffers. And again, we want to continue paying that, but future increases are something we're asking employees to take on, including managers and non-union. We don't think that's a We don't think that's a uh a big ask in this day and age where most people are all contributing to their health coverage through work or private insurers. And the other thing that has been uh offered formally in the proposal is that there would be a committee formed. It would be an insurance committee that would have two union members, one non-union and one management, all on a committee that could dig into the town's insurance plan. They will be in charge of going and uh seeing what coverage the employees have that can't be touched. If there's special needs for some people, well, you can't touch that sort of thing. And then make some tweaks, if possible, here or there, that have little impact on the employees, still maintaining great health coverage and saving some money, which would actually save money for the employees who are paying into the plan and would have no impact on the town. And again, all four people on that committee are under that plan, so they all have a big stake in what happens. And obviously, it would be important to all four that not big changes are made. Then we are asking that they would make a recommendation to council based on their findings, if they go out for pricing and if they make some changes and here's what we think would help. And this is not going to be a ten percent increase. Now, it's going to be not at five percent because of the things we're proposing to do. Of course, council would say yes. Uh the group insurance doesn't have anything to do with us, other than we're paying for it now. Uh but if our costs are not going to rise and council is not under the group insurance plan, then we would have no reason other than to say, yes, the four people who are under the plan, go ahead, uh make those changes and we will uh I'd be happy that you saved a few dollars on any increases. But what is being contested still publicly is that we are not giving the union a say. And I said, well, that just doesn't add up with the facts when you consider this committee. All people with a stake, there's really nothing to say that the union has no say. They have a lot of say. So did the non-union and management. And when we have a contract that now states that there has to be mutual agreement with the union on any changes, that is problematic because the union now pays zero to premiums. Some employees pay while they're uh working the seasonal ones so that they can get their insurance covered when they're off. And that's uh how that works. But they are uh not paying anything to the plan. So logic would tell you that the plan um is not something that has been um thinking about the the other thing I wanted to say now, but but really, uh to be able to say that they would make no changes. Uh obviously, if I'm not paying into something or anybody isn't, well, why would you ever agree to any changes? And that's our fear, is that there will be never any agreement on any changes. And the union had said, and a correspondence that was sent out of the mailbox is that they don't care if we go to market, they just want the same coverage. Uh so, you know, they pretty well said that themselves. The last thing I'll say about that, because it kind of ties up the clarification, is there's been a lot of talk in the last few months. Particularly, uh it didn't come up until months into negotiations that the union executive had been contesting that they gave up a significant wage increase to get the hundred percent benefits back in two thousand and three. So, you know, we went back, I did, and with staff and others, and we checked to see uh you know, what years there were increases in wages and and when there may not have been, because the number thrown around was a two dollar an hour increase. And the thing is that there have been increases uh in every single year, every single contract since that time, with the exception of the outside workers only, not inside, in two thousand and three. In that one year, there was a zero percent. Then the next year, they were back to uh another increase. And for that zero percent um that year, um if it was a two percent or two dollar an hour wage increase at that time in two thousand and three, we'd be talking about a significant wage increase. On top of that, obviously, everybody knows insurance costs have gone through the roof. Um if I were to look at the wages of our employees in two thousand and twenty-one and there was a sacrifice like a two dollar an hour wage increase given up, then I would think, again logically, that their wages would reflect that. Now, it's very difficult to compare wages across other towns and organizations because there's uh some descrip- some jobs that are just different. Some jobs are called different, some job descriptions are uh are different and it's hard to compare apples to apples. But certainly, when you look at our unionized wages and our management, non-union as well, they are in line with other communal uh nother- other communities in the province and definitely do not uh reflect a two dollar an hour sacrifice and are still getting one hundred percent benefits paid for the premiums. So that's the truth. I know people are telling me that that uh, you know, that I'm lying about that, but I'm not. It's in the proposal and it is factual history. So I wanted to uh mention that as well. You know, for some of the rallies and that, and I'll clue this up in a second, but some of the rallies and some of the things that have been said that we are totally against the workers and, you know, this is disrespectful and we're saying their contract is too rich. I never said their contract was too rich. Never ever have I said it. I didn't hear anybody else on this council say it. All I heard me myself saying, I know I said, is that I believe the collective agreement with the town of Grand Falls Windsor and its unionized workforce is fair. And I believe that it's very good. Uh and that's great. But the uh changes to the agreement, it as proposed, uh it still is fair. And nobody can convince me otherwise because I know just about every clause now, as some others do, but when you look at the the facts, really, it's uh it's disappointing when you hear those kinds of rhetoric and that. Um you know, uh the respect, um obviously, I believe this council certainly uh has respected the uh workers. I've been around eight years and have shown every employee respect uh for the entire time and I've gotten nothing but respect in return. And I hope that when we do get this put behind us, whether I'm on council or these counselors are with me or not, that we can work with the unionized workforce and other employees to make things better for everyone. But we have a part to play in what is going to be financial implications in the future of all municipalities across the province and Grand Falls Windsor just happens to be the first. So hopefully, we can get back to the table real soon. I know things are kind of caught up in the election for everybody now, it appears. So whoever does get in, uh if I am here, I'd be looking forward to lead that and to make sure that we can get that put behind us for the betterment of everybody and to turn the page and to look to getting back on a positive track. Uh if I'm not here, I'd wish them all the best as well. I've been born and raised here my whole fifty years, almost fifty-one now. I've been here. I know the community quite well. And as a counselor or mayor, to be accountable for citizens and the finances of the town is one of the biggest obligations that you have. And for me, I feel that even though I feel certainly for everybody involved in this, many of the union workers are my friends and it's the last thing that we want to be doing. It is. But we have an obligation to protect the public uh coffers. And I believe what we're doing is is just that. Um you know, it talks about people being taken out of their position and demoted and uh let go and uh you know, there it there's just no truth to it. There's obviously been a lot of mistrust on both sides and that is a big part of this. But when you look at the actual discussion around these clauses and what they mean, which is really what we need to continue to get at if we can, uh but there really hasn't been any meaningful discussion on some of these big things since we began. Um so I hope that we can put it all behind us. I feel for the families and the employees. And I know some people are probably, you know, saying whatever now because I've heard and seen it all. But that's me and I know the rest of the people involved in this also feel in their heart that they're doing what's best for the community. And I know the union also feels that they're doing what is right and best. And I respect that. Um and I certainly hope that um, you know, getting back to the table is something that we do very soon and something that we can do for the betterment of the town and the betterment of everybody. Because uh I know that for myself, I will take comfort in the fact that I will in my heart know that I've been standing for this town ever since I've been in this position and since I've been on council. And that will take me through uh because that's who I am. So I just wanted to say that. Uh I know it was a long spiel. I apologize. And there's so much more that could be said and needs to be said probably, but uh being that it's the last chance to speak directly to this in the public council meeting, I felt I had to take the opportunity to make some of those comments. And as always, uh you know, I think all council are are available for information and staff as well to be able to get uh information if uh required. And I know there's been a lot of questions about a lot of things, but almost, I would say ninety percent of the things that are being discussed or talked about, even though they're not, they are real issues and important issues, uh they're impossible to answer all at this point and have little to do with the actual negotiations and the actual clauses that we're trying to get rectified for everyone. So again, thanks to everybody and thanks to the residents especially. Uh we have a great town here in Grand Falls Windsor. And I know that everybody here and councils previous and all the staff, my mom worked with the town for forty-one years. I grew up in the town hall down there, uh running around in offices. I know this town well. I care about it very much, as I know everybody else here on this council certainly does because I know everybody personally. So thanks for listening. Um and I will ask if anybody has anything to say. I know we went around, but I had some uh lengthy comments there. Uh if not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Counselor Bennett?
Moved by Counselor Bennett. Seconder?
Counselor.
Seconded by Counselor Witham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, take care, everyone. Thank you.
Night.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Manuel. Thank you to our council and staff. Thank you to all the public who are watching us tonight. Uh thank you for joining us and have a great evening. Thank you.